Good morning. I'm Zan O'Groh, this year's board chair. And pass it on to Commissioner Weiss.
Nancy Weiss, Commissioner and Vice Chair.
Vance Currie, County Council.
Just in time, Jeff Van Arsdale, Benton County Sheriff. And I assume we're wearing the CPD hat as a loss in the fighting competition. And so I'll be all right with it, I guess.
I'll explain.
I think she needs a sheriff's office hat, Jeff. That's what you're supposed to say. Okay, other staff introductions.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder.
Lynn McKee, Director of Benton County Natural Areas Parks and Events.
Melissa Rash, Public Information Officer.
Suzanne Hoffman, Health Department.
Okay. I know we have other guests with us today as well. We have Joel Plon, our local water master from Water Resources Department, and Councilor Lytle from the Corvallis City Council, and Kate Porsha from our Joint Economic Development Office, and Julie Jackson from our Public Services, and Vance Currie, our County Council. So with that, I would like to let you all know that Commissioner Malone will be joining us later. He had some other business he had to deal with this morning, and he will be late. And secondly, we also know that Nick Kurt, our Program Manager for the Justice Systems Improvement Program, is out sick today. And I will facilitate the discussion that we are going to have under item 4.5 when we get to that point. So that's where we are at the moment. Lastly, I want to acknowledge the fact that we are on Calaquieth land, that we appropriated through treaty, the Leamont Treaty in the 1800s, and that descendants of the Calaquieth peoples are still with us with both Confederations, the Stollets and the Confederation of Grand Braun Indians. And we work with them today to continue to honor our stewardship here in Benton County. The next item up is comments from the public. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, we will move on to review and approve the agenda. I have no changes. Are there any other changes from Commissioner Weiss or County Council?
No changes, other than a light nail bit.
Okay.
And I don't have any change. I just want to let the Chair know that District Attorney John Haroldson plans to join the meeting at the courthouse.
Excellent, thank you. Commissioner Weiss.
Thank you. Well, I was going to announce that I was stepping down from commission and joining CPDs. But Sheriff Van Arsdale already left the cat out of the bag. That's okay. You know, there was that infamous tiding contest. Nick Hurley did win. I made a side wager with Council President Lytle, who is joining me today briefly for this. You know, I lost the bet, so here I am. Got my CPD hat. I'm officially a junior something or other. I've got this lovely little pen. So, oh, and some new decorations for my office. Yep, yep. So here I am. Oh, and this lovely bracelet. Hopefully, it's all in good fun.
So what this tells us, Nancy, is you need to be in training next year so you don't lose again.
Well, it was Sheriff Van Arsdale and Chief Hurley. And, you know, it was all them. So we just like to get on some fun, so.
I can't believe you threw the sheriff under the bus. That's bad practice.
Okay. Well, with that bit of fun, let's move on. I would also like to acknowledge that County Administrator Joe Kirby is on vacation this week, visiting his first grandchild. And we have Suzanne Hoffman, our Health Department Director, in an acting role. And she is with us today. So with that, we will move on, consider the agenda approved, and move into item 4.1, which is our update from our water master for District 22. Joel.
Chair, O'Groh, I think the sheriff had something to say.
Oh, okay. Sheriff.
I would like that, and I have done this already. Commissioner Weiss losing the bet. It was through a veteran's benefit that we did have the tiding competition. And we made enough money that there was five beneficiaries to the charity. Each one was able to pocket $2,500 for their veterans' charity. So it was for a very good event, and I really do appreciate it, by Commissioner Weiss and Council President Lytle having fun with this. But it was for a good benefit. I do want to make sure everybody knows that as well.
Yeah. And me and some of the other elected officials had a bet that we would donate $50 to the charity of choice. So Chief Hurley chose Old Mill Center for Children and Families, and we all submitted to there. Good times for a good cause.
Thank you all. Now the floor is here, Joel. Welcome.
Hi, good morning. I'm Joel Plon. I work for the State Org, Water Resources Department, as District 22 Water Master. I'm in charge. Mainly, I cover Amhill, Polk, and Benton County, majority of all three of those counties. And my duties are distributing water among the water users in times of shortage, drought, spring, this year, as well as responding to general complaints regarding water use, whether it be pumping from a stream, a well, those types of things. This season was probably one of the most challenging that I've faced doing this for a while. The irrigation season for streams in Benton County at the end of September. So typically, anybody who's pumping from a stream, come the end of September, that's the end of the irrigation season. They can't pump anymore. So I looked at the report that was put out by the USDA, along with NOAA, and Drought Monitor, October 4, 2021. And at that time, 25 counties had received executive orders issuing drought declarations in Oregon. Counties nearby would be Amhill, Lincoln, Lynn, and Lane Counties. They all had drought declarations declared. Over 96% of Oregon was classified as experiencing a severe to exceptional drought condition, according to the newest drought monitor, which again is working with data from NOAA, well, USDA sources. Roughly 76% of Benton County was experiencing an extreme drought. Due to the drought conditions, we had really low water flows in streams throughout all of these counties that I'm monitoring. Mary's River experienced really low water flows this year. And because of that, we had to regulate for senior users. The way it works is when a water right user doesn't have enough water at their authorized diversion for what their right is, they can call and call me and make a call and say, I don't have enough water. I want you to start shutting off the junior users upstream. So what I do is I go out and verify by doing an actual stream flow measurement at that diversion to see, is it true? You know, do they really not have enough water for their right? And then if it is, I look at junior users, junior in priority upstream of them, and will start regulating in order to get the water down to their point of diversion. And so in the Mary's River Basin, this year, we've regulated back to June 22, 1978. And that involves sending out 22 regulation notices to water users on the stream system, not just Mary's River, but also tributaries of Mary's River. The city of Fullmouth was one of the users that received a shut-off notice this season for funding their water rights. I'd do this in 1980 from Mary's River. However, I talked to the city prior to the shut-off notice going out to see, you know, if this wasn't affecting what they were using. But they were, at that time, they weren't exercising all of the rights they have on the Mary's River. So even though the 1980s was being shut off, they weren't pumping to that extent yet. They don't use that 1980 right at this time. So they received a shut-off notice, but it really didn't affect them because they weren't using all of the rights that they have for their senior rights stayed on. Another stream that we spend a lot of time, it seems like every year, monitoring, measuring, is Muddy Creek, which is a tributary of Mary's River. Typically, every year, we get senior calls made for water in that stream system. Same thing this year. So we spend time out there monitoring, using and measuring the stream flow to see if that senior user has enough water. This year, the flow was right at what that senior user's water right was for, which was probably a couple hundred gallons a minute was all we had in the stream. And so we didn't end up regulating because they did have enough water, but there was literally no more water with only five than what their rights were. Another area that we spend a lot of time on is the Lucky Mule River Basin. And while the majority of the Lucky Mule River Basin is in Polk County, a portion does come down to Benton County, and there are rights that get regulated. The Lucky Mule River Basin is regulated all the way back to June 22, 1964. And so we sent a total of 229 shut-off notices. And some of those shut-off notices were to landowners in Benton County who use the water from the stream system. So just in general, we saw extremely low water flows. I would compare it to 2015. That was kind of the last time that I had really heavy regulation on Mary's River and all these other streams. So it was not funny to me. Another thing that we continue to spend time on is receiving complaints and investigating hemp growth as well as legal and illegal arachnoid growths. And so what we've been doing, what I've been is working with OLCC on the licensed marijuana growths and doing site inspections on those to verify what waters to water and do they have water rights for that use. I also work with Department of Ag as far as the hemp grows go. Because they're the ones that issue the license or permits to grow the hemp. And so we do site inspections with them as well to see, again, what water needs to be. Does it need a water right? Does it have a water right? A lot of times, kind of spend on those. They're a little tricky. A lot of them are smaller growths. And they will say that they truck water in. And so sometimes, if you have receipts, we have caught some that, you know, have pumps in the creek, and it's quite obvious that they're just pulling from the creek. So we've worked with OLCC. In some cases, we've issued notice of violations and find that they're issued by us as well as OCC. So it's kind of an ongoing area that we're spending more and more time on each year. Like most years, we receive several well complaints as far as my well is not pumped much as it used to, or I think my neighbor drying up, or just regarding development. While we receive a lot of these, I would say 99% of the time, it's usually something wrong with the well in person. And so typically, if I get a dry well complaint, I'll go out there, and it could be anything from the power's not running to the pumping form, pump's burned up, there's a break in the line, and the pump just runs continuously without ever shutting off. Those are the majority of the problems. The actual interference between one well and the other. I really only had one of those that I dealt with in Polk County, where it was one domestic user was impacting another domestic user. So the majority of the time, it's just some other issue. And so we continue to respond to those and try to chisel shoot with landowners and educate them, figure out what is wrong. So that was most of what we did this summer, is kind of just running around doing stream flow measurements. I want to give a big thanks to Benton County for providing funds so we can hire a temporary assistant water master during the summer. I would not be able to do a majority of things without having that person. That person this year spent the majority of time doing stream flow measurements every day. We were monitoring flows across all three counties. In Benton County, we had several measurements on Mary's River, Muddy, Oliver, Greasy. These flow measurements are very beneficial. They allow us to communicate with the farming community and say, here's how much water we actually have in the stream coming down. Here's why we're setting low flows. And it also, the only way we have to regularly distribute water is by knowing how much water's in those streams. So I just wanted to take the time and say thank you because those funds are very beneficial to us. It really helped out this summer. And yeah, that's all I have. So if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to.
John, could you open that door?
With respect to the amount of time you all are ending up spending on water rights for marijuana and hemp with OLCC and ODA, is there any funding coming through the legislature to or the Orton Water Resources Department to help with that?
Yeah, we received a significant amount of funding this year through the legislature just for the Water Resources Department in general. The field services, which I work in, receive a lot of money. They're hiring several new positions throughout the state for assistant water masters. The Northwest Region, which is where I work, we are giving, I mean, almost reaching assistant water master to help us. I think Josephine County, they've had the majority of issues down there. They've just had so many, been overwhelming these things. So I think they're getting two assistant water masters. But every region is giving staffing to help with the field side of it. And everyone's realizing, you know, this is a big problem. It takes a lot of time to investigate these and gather the evidence. Oftentimes, you know, these places are kind of hiding in plain sight. They'll just say, well, we're growing hemp. You know, we're not growing marijuana. And that's been not the case in a majority of cases, as well as they'll say, well, we truck water and provide you one or two receipts. And it's kind of just, the burden's on us to prove that they're illegally taking the water either from a well or from the stream. And so it's just a significant amount of time. I spent, I think, it took me two seasons to finally catch one user pulling out of the creek, actually. They just would keep telling me they're trucking water for five receipts. And they had a pump in the creek, but every time I was there, it's never running. And they claimed, you know, it's for fire protection, which is in an emergency fire, you can't pump from a creek to put the fire out. And so it just took time before I, you know, got lucky one day and showed up. It was on, irrigation was going, and I was finally able to go down the enforcement route and show a notice of violation. And what ended up happening on that is we went down that route, and then we ended up working with them to actually transfer neighbors' water right over to their property. So now they are in compliance with the law. They do have water to irrigate that.
That sounds like a fortunate outcome. That's not very common.
Yeah.
Well, I'm glad to hear that you're getting additional resources that should be of great help and presumably year-round and not just temporary, correct?
Yes, yes, they'll come in through the chair.
Excellent. Well, let us know if you'll still need help or not so that we can make those decisions moving forward as well.
I will.
Any other questions, Nancy, from your perspective?
No, just thank you for coming and presenting to us today. It always helps to have someone explaining it. You know, it's always better than reading it, so thank you.
Anytime.
Yeah, I think we're going to see more years like this. All this rain right now, which will help, hopefully, for next season. But yeah, we need snow too.
Yeah, the other thing is too is, you know, we're pretty much reliant on the coast range. And so, you know, a lot of reports go off of the snowpack. But we don't really have the snowpack for these types of basins. What I've noticed is we can get a few showers here and there throughout the summer. It makes a significant difference in the stream flow in these basins. And typically, you know, we can make it through without regulation. We have enough water. But the past, you know, what it's trending to be is we're just not getting any showers throughout the summer. We're getting week-long, 100-degree weather, which just kills these streams. And so it's just becoming more challenging. And people oftentimes want a prediction, but it's so hard to predict because no one knows. You know, are we going to get a few showers throughout the summer and be okay or not? So it's been really challenging. And the trend is going towards drier, hotter, and just less water still there.
Yep. Yeah, Greasy Creek is about the only one that really gets much of the snow, you know, any snowpack except from the Mary's Peak.
Yeah.
Maybe Tum Tum, but, yeah, it's tough. We're going to have to start thinking about it differently. It's going to be hard. Well, I'm grateful for the report. I'm sorry Commissioner Malone is not here. I'm sure he would have questions also, given that he's out there in Kings Valley on the Lucky Mule and probably heard more about the challenges out there than we did. So if we don't have any other questions, we will move on. And just very grateful for your presence today. Gary, do you have any questions? Gary's our Public Works Director. And I wanted to introduce the two of you if you've not met. We are intending to work on a collaborative water project here in Benton County focused on municipal water rights first and foremost, and looking at more intertie and more sharing capacity. And Gary is going to take the lead on that project. So Joel, you may be hearing from him as we move forward.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you for having me. Have a good day.
And you as well. So next up is discussion of 2022 fee schedules for community development, natural areas, parks, and events, and Public Works. So Director Stockhoff with Public Works, Lynn McKee from Natural Areas, Parks, and Events. And we have Greg Brett with us as well, but not on camera at the moment. There he is, to present this item. Welcome.
And thank you, Commissioners. I'll kick it off, and I'll also let you know that George Looney has joined us and, you know, kind of did some of the technical aspects of this. But this came up a couple weeks ago at our quarterly meeting. You should have since received the information on the increases being proposed. And I would just kick it over to Lynn, or Greg, or you all, if you have any questions. And the idea is, I think this comes back on the 7th for the official action on it. This is just a discussion today.
At the work session, we had a brief, or not work session, but at our quarterly meeting that Gary mentioned, we had a brief discussion about the subdivision fees that the Planning Division is proposing. And you wanted more information on that, so I'm happy to discuss that a little bit. I do want to point out, there's something over Gary's right shoulder that probably bears checking out. Or is that left shoulder? I can't tell if you're mirrored or... Anyway, right there. Nice. Okay, so I'll share my screen for a moment. So the, whoops. Sorry, I'm getting used to the new version of go-to meeting. My window went away. There we go. Okay. Oh, sorry, it's thinking about it. Okay. Can you see my screen? Okay. Sorry, I'm scrolling down to the actual table. So most of our fees for Planning Division are proposed to go up to standard 5%. There were a couple of new fees for kind of splitting out some categories within the partition application. So that's why those show up a little differently. But the one in particular that I wanted to talk with you more about is our subdivision fee, which the proposal would be to increase the base fee by 71%, which is major, and the per lot fee by 14%. So they go from 2,100 to, 2,100 up to 3,595, and per lot, 220 up to 250. And I will share a little bit of... And I will share a little bit of comparison that I did with surrounding, or counties in, in the area. The reason for this fee increase request is that we had our first subdivision in probably 10 years or more this past year, and it took significantly more time than the subdivision fee accounted for. And it's been a number of years, as I said, since we had one, so we just haven't, you know, regulations and process have changed over that time. And there's, the easy land is gone, the more difficult land is what's being subdivided these days. So it takes more, more work, more coordination, more work with the applicant, coordination with other agencies, et cetera. So this is a comparison of, I think with counties that I would consider comparable in terms of land use process. And there is quite a range. So, for example, Marion County, and there's different ways of calculating the fee in each county. Usually there's a base fee plus a per lot fee. But then there's other factors, like in Lane County, they add a percentage and then a hundred dollars for something else. Bottom line, for a small subdivision, for, say, four lot subdivision, Marion County, it's just under $2,000 up to Lane County at 6,800. For comparison to Corvallis, basically 8,800. Our fee for, as proposed for a four lot subdivision would be 4,600. For a larger subdivision, let's say 12 lots, which is more likely, four lots is the absolute minimum for a subdivision, something in the range of eight to 12 is probably more likely from what we've seen in, in the past few subdivisions we've done. They range from 2,100 up to basically 9,000 for Lane County, 9,500 for Corvallis. Our fee would be 6,600 roughly. So we're in the range of those counties, certainly not at the bottom end of it, but kind of in the mid to upper of those counties. So is that helpful? Do you have other questions? Happy to discuss further.
Commissioner Wise? Yeah, I think, not having had any subdivisions to contend with for a long time, we just had no data to base our fees on, so it's clear that we needed to just catch up. And I think this is definitely within the, within the ballpark for local costs, so we'll see whether it covers our staff time now moving forward. Okay, and everything else is basically on formula basis in terms of fee increase, not applied completely across the board. There are some cases where it's like a little bit different, but.
Right, slight differences here and there, but essentially 5% across the board.
Uh huh.
I would also point out, I think we had a brief discussion about environmental health fees in comparison and the decision there, I think, to not raise many of their, many or all, I'm not sure, of their fees. And I, you know, I think obviously that's a consideration in this, in, in these times, especially, I would say, given environmental health, a lot of their fees cover restaurants and other businesses that have been hard hit during the pandemic. So that is certainly a consideration with land use fees. You know, this is a, a sector of the economy that has not suffered to the same degree from our, at least from our building permit numbers. And I think the flip side of it is we have to look at, so if we don't raise fees, who, there is a cost still and who bears that cost. And so the, the cost is borne by taxpayers in general. So it's been our philosophy to, to keep fees up aligned with costs rather than spread that cost to the general public more. But that's certainly something to consider in times like these.
That is certainly the philosophical approach that we've taken with community development, public works fees. And I know that natural areas, parks and events is a little bit different again from that. And environmental health, it's not, those aren't episodic, those are, you know, ongoing fees every year, year over year. So it's a little bit of a different beast to compare those kinds of environmental health restaurants and pool fees to development fees. So I think that that's another element of the difference. And I'm also very grateful that we don't penalize folks too heavily when they're having their septic systems upgraded and updated because we want that, we want water quality to be as good as possible and not see failing septic systems go unfixed just because of the cost of fees. So there are reasons.
For sure.
Lynn, would you like to address any of the main fees?
Um, I think they're pretty straightforward. We added the 5% for RV storage, the 6% for facilities rentals. The one I do want to point out is the, the large gathering special use permit. That's been a thousand dollars for years as far as, I think Leanna said, the whole time she's been here, in years, it's been the same. So we are gonna do, there's a big jump in that one. You'll see it went from 1,000, 1,250. I think over the next few years, we need to focus on making some fairly big jumps. Looking at some other, I went, Marion County was $5,000. So our thousand dollar one is, is really low. And, and the main one that uses that right now is Shrewsbury, so we just finished that one. And, but when you look at the amount of staff time, you know, Scott Kruger going out on setup day and his staff going on Saturday and inspecting all the food vendors and everything, there's a lot of staff time. And I'd like to get to a point where I, we're not losing money on that. And then I also realized that if we offer a five-year, um, if we offer a five-year renewal like Shrewsbury has, and we have to go out every year for five years based on that same fee, should we have a different fee for the five-year versus a one and done time? Because now we've only made a thousand dollars, we've gotta go out there for five years. So I think, i- if you're okay with it, I think I'm gonna just create a separate five-year special use permit and, and put, and put that $5,000 sign on there like Marion County has. So that would be a thousand dollars a year for each year that we have to go out and, and inspect them and inspect their food vendors and their hygiene and, and their hand wash stations. And it's, it's a lot of staff time and travel and everything else. So I think we need to make sure that we're getting that, that funding back. Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
Commissioner Wise?
I mean, it sounds okay the way you explained it so far.
Yeah, 'cause right now the thousand would just be a one and done, but we allow Shrewsbury to do, we allow this five-year renewal, so we don't have to jump through that hoop every year. So we're not jumping through that hoop on the Board of Commissioners side, but we're still going out every year and inspecting that over five years. That's a lot of staff time. So I think we should offer the five-year renewal, but there should be a different special permit price on that. So I will update, I would just think about that every day, like, why do you do that? That's five years worth. So, um, so I will, before it comes to you December 7th, I'm gonna add that five-year version of the, of the gathering permit.
Thank you. And I know that County Council is still here with us. When we looked at that five-year permit this time around, we also looked at the fact that the insurance requirements haven't been updated in a very long time. Perhaps at the same time, we should take a look at the liability, the insurance requirements. But that, I think it's written into our county code, so it'll require a little more work.
So the insurance piece, remember, we have insurance requirements as a government and our insurance requirement in the code is for a private entity. And that's why we have, we have not kicked it up higher, honestly. I would be very surprised if Shrewsbury's festival has, is not higher than what we authorize. They simply have so many moving parts out there that it behooves them to have a higher insurance. So I remember you talked about this last time, Commissioner O'Drill, and I looked at the code and I realized our code requirement of the insurance is not predicated on county limits, but the fact that we are committing a private entity. So that's why the insurance requirement is as it is.
Okay, thank you.
Um, otherwise, it might be, but I think everything's pretty straightforward. Some you see that there's no change, depending on, we went out and do comparables of other facilities just to make sure we're staying in alignment and so that's, but that was the only one that's really a big jump was that special use permit for the large gathering.
Okay.
Lynn, have that special use permit cost gone up since it was implemented? Yeah, you're probably the wrong person to ask, and she wanted the part director.
Well, Leanna said it has not gone up since she's been here, which is like 10 years. So it's been a thousand dollars for a very long time. So it's time for us to kind of incrementally start to kind of, but when I start to see, it's kind of interesting, Lane County charges by the staff hour. They have like a $250 start and then they, you know, however many hours they spend, it's gonna cha-ching up. So we have that, that amount. So, you know, some counties doing it a little differently than we are. Yeah, make sure that, I just wanna make sure our staff time is fully covered.
And one thing I will say about stepping it up, remember that the, the applicant or the permitee is only gonna come by once every five years. So I don't know how that factors into your step up plan, but it, it may be a shock to them five years when they've missed some steps.
I guess, I guess as a question, Vance, I mean, can we do a, a one year? I mean, I'm, I'm proposing a 1,250 for a one and done, one year, and then can we have a five-year special permit? I mean, if they're gonna have a step up there five years in a row, it should be a more expensive permit than a one and done.
You know, I, I think that is one where, and, and I, you're right, I mean, it should be commensurate with the amount of time we're permitting. However, we do ask them to come, come through and submit the requirements, that they're meeting the, the permit requirements annually. It seems more financially practical to have them pay an amount every year rather than one sum, that's $7,500. But to me, it's more, more in line with them coming back to us every year and verifying that they're meeting the conditions to also one, one fifth of the cost we're gonna do this.
Okay, okay. All right, we'll, we'll set that up. And just, I just wanna make sure our staff time is covered fully with the, with the fee, you know? And I'll confirm with Scott Kruger how much time his staff is spending out there. I mean, they're only going on weekends and, and do a lot of inspections and things like that. So I wanna, I will confirm with him how much time he's spending and make sure that we're covering that. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we need a motion to move this to the December 7th Board Meeting.
I move to forward order setting fees for public works, community development, and natural areas, parks and events for 2022 to the December 7th, 2021 Board Meeting.
Thank you. Second? All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, so we will bring it back on the seventh for formal approval. We appreciate the extra time today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Okay, um, next up, we have a presentation from Republic Services, Julie Jackson and Daniel Reddick and Greg Berett from Community Development, who will also be joining us heavily. Good morning, Julie.
Bernie.
Good morning, Daniel.
Good morning. So thank you for having us on today. We just wanted to bring to your attention for discussion the Refuge Rate Index adjustments for 2022. That's based on CPI adjustments and the RRI adjustment factor is 4%, which would be an average increase of $1.46 per residential account per month. This doesn't require action by the Board, but we wanted to bring it for discussion today.
Okay, I've been through this many times before. It's pretty standard process. The indices have changed a little bit because of changing, disappearing indices, new ways of calculation, but any questions, Commissioner Wise? Okay. Well, maybe a very short presentation is boring then. Okay.
The only thing that I would add is we, we did wanna make you aware that along with almost everybody else who employs CBL truck drivers, we are experiencing difficulty in finding drivers. We have, it's to the trainer program, so we are training people to drive trucks in the way that we think is safe and, and that's a little bit longer because we want to put them through a lot of training, but that seems to be paying off. I think we've almost fully staffed in the Corvallis Division again, and that is really good. So we've been able to keep up on our route and that should go forward. The other thing I just wanted to update you on is the Plastics Pollution and Recycling Modernization Act, and I put that information in the packet. I think this is really exciting news for Oregon. It won't be implemented until July 2025, but there are a lot of moving parts to get organized, a lot of rulemaking in the meantime. But what it will do, a couple of important things that it will do include bringing the producers into the, the responsibility for disposal and end of life of the products that they're selling in Oregon, which I think is very positive. And then the other thing we've been clamoring for, for a long time, is a statewide list of what goes in the recycle cart. So no more people coming to Benton County and saying, well, in Portland, I can recycle these. There will be an extensive amount of research done about what's actually recycled, where there are markets specifically for plastics, and we will have a statewide list. So those are just a couple of highlights. I think that FAQ sheet that DEQ put together and that I put in your packet is really good, and I'll continue to keep you updated on that as we hear more information, as I'm sure Daniel will too.
Thank you. One question that occurred to me as I was reading through that information is that, you know, Oregon is a relatively small state in terms of population. Are other states also moving in this direction towards more of a producer responsibility approach? Is this likely to be a, a larger movement?
Yeah, I think, I think that's a really important step because we got a lot of pushback as it moves through the legislature. Because Oregon is so small, the, the manufacturers and producers were saying, well, we can't possibly label things just for Oregon. And I think, I think we know that they can based on the bottle bill many years ago, but California is now pushing through the same kind of legislation and that helps a lot because they are significantly larger than Oregon. And the first, Oregon was the second bill signed in the nation, the first one of its kind with what we call EPR, Extended Producer Responsibility. It was in Minnesota just about a month before Oregon, but there's also talk about national legislation. And, you know, my opinion is that's where we need to get, to really get all the producers on board and do the most effective job we can. So yeah, I think the answer is yes.
Yeah, I know the state of Maine also has an Extended Producer Responsibility Law that just recently went into effect as well.
And Daniel, Maine, Minnesota could be Maine. I think you, I think you hit it right.
Okay, well, one of those M states, Maine, that's, okay. Well, that's great. I'm glad to hear that. I know it's a, it's a big topic and it's such a challenging one, and everyone wants to do better. We all wanna minimize the amount of waste we're generating because, as we know, disposal space is limited and it's energy intensive to create all this waste. So many reasons. So I'm very grateful that we were able to get that legislation through in the last session. I'm eager to get the system going, but also I'm glad that the legislature provided that long ramp up because it's complicated and it won't happen overnight. Okay, and congratulations on filling your driver's spots. That's a really tall order these days, challenged throughout the economy.
It definitely is.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, then at this point, we will, um, say thank you to all of you and we will, um, come back and formally approve this, uh, we don't have to, this is not ours, this is just yours, right? Yeah. Yep, yep. So thank you for the update, much appreciated.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay, good. We are heading next into our Economic Development Office update and Kate Porcha was with us, but she is now, um, not online, I don't think. Um, why don't we take, um, just a quick, uh, break and, uh, we'll get in touch with Kate Porcha and make sure she's back for our report. So Kate, welcome.
Thank you, good morning. Thank you for, for pinging me, Commissioner Omero, I greatly appreciate it. So I'm going to be free this morning, wanted to just, uh, appear for you today and give you our update of our first quarter work for the fiscal year 2122. So this is a, a look backward at the timeframe beginning, uh, July 1st and running through the end of September, though I do want to kind of update you on some things that are currently going on as well. Um, really, we've been kind of in the work of transitioning out of pandemic and emergency response mode and back into our, our more typical work, I think it's fair to say. Um, yeah, and for us, that is of course, um, chatting with businesses. We've had a, a number of folks reaching out. There's been a fair amount of interest in land and projects down at the Airport Industrial Park. Um, our friends in Saloma have a couple of pretty exciting projects underway that we've been at the table, uh, trying to work to help, um, see those projects come to fruition. Um, so it's, it's been interesting. I think as folks are emerging, um, they've been given a lot of thought and, and stuff is, is ready to start happening. Uh, we've also restarted our advisory boards here at the city. I think you guys know, and for us, that includes not just our Economic Development Coalition, but then Climate Action Advisory Board and our, I mentioned, Corvallis, um, Action Network. Uh, our work plan includes a line item about a focus on our downtowns and we've continued to work on updating our city council quarterly about the status of, uh, downtown Corvallis, what's going on down there, working with the DCA. Um, they did report out, uh, they, in the past, that organization has used, uh, EID or Economic Incentment District to fund the work that they do, and they've recently decided to pivot away from that funding model and are going to be looking at, uh, a slightly different funding model, which I think will focus more on membership and, uh, a membership structure for buildings and not just businesses. Um, the EID, it can be a very heavy-handed approach and it puts a lien on the property when people don't pay and it, it, it's not the best feeling tool for downtowns to use. And in fact, we learned from Sherry Stewart at Oregon Main Street, there's only about four or five communities that are still using that tool as a funding mechanism. So I think it's, it's, uh, become sort of passe for good reason, and so DCA is going to be exploring these other routes. Um, yeah, the next item, we, um, under our COVID work and response, uh, as you guys know, Jerry Sordi and our other teammates worked really closely with Jennifer from DCA and our other partners to stand up the, um, Business Right-Away Program, which allows businesses to use space throughout the community. Um, we have extended that program, um, through the wintertime, folks are going to be able to use it. Uh, our team will be monitoring those setups just to make sure that they remain compliant. We had, we had just a, a little bit of trouble, not, not biggie, just a, a couple of folks last year that I think when the rains came began to build rather, uh, significant structures, which was a little outside, uh, the confines of what this program had intended. So we'll, we'll be monitoring those and continuing with it. The goal then is to, uh, potentially take this to city council for the consideration of making this into a permanent program in the springtime. Council had, uh, good reason to delay that decision because our friends in Public Works are completing a downtown parking study. They wanted to finish that up. It was kind of a critical piece that needed to go first and then we'll have this conversation about the business right away. Uh, but the good news is Jerry has done yeoman's work on that and has basically drafted a potential policy, so we've really got it teed up and ready to go. Um, our food hub, super exciting. You guys may recall, this is our project, the 550,000, with great thanks to Senator Gelsner Bluden. We, um, Catherine and I are working on this one and we've continued our meetings and making the rounds and meeting with stakeholders throughout the county involved in food and food systems. We've met with, um, 13, maybe closer to 15 different folks, uh, that have an interest in food and food hubs, letting them know about what this funding was roughly identified for, how it might work, and asking if they want to join us at the table of this work group that we'll be putting together. Um, at this point, um, we have heard from the states that they're in the process of reviewing all of those ARPA allocations that the legislators made, and so, uh, the GAF is conducting that review now. When it is complete, which we heard would maybe be the first part of next year, then once they deemed it, like, yes, this is worthy and meets rules, then they'll pass through the funding. And so at the point at which we receive the funding, then we're going to pull the, the group together and begin to really discuss, um, next steps for this, what we think is going to be transitional, um, project down in South Town, which we remain really excited about. Um, couple other updates. The gap analysis and asset mapping, I've had a chance to meet with a handful of consultants on this, to kind of talk with them, see what they've done in other communities. My colleague, uh, Courtney Graysill from Springfield came and spoke to our Economic Development Coalition about what they did in Springfield, which is a very similar project. And, um, in discussions with consultants, I think we're getting really close to wrapping our arms around like the types of questions that we want to answer, how we want to move forward. Um, it is our intention though, we, we would like to consider the potential of using some ARPA funding to fund this work. Um, the timing though of the discussions of ARPA funding, both for you all as county commissioners and then for our own city council, it has been a little more pro, protracted, I think, than, than, um, I had originally thought, but for good reason, as you guys are, are balancing all the other federal money that's coming down and not wanting to duplicate and incorporating your public processes. So we're sort of, I'm continuing to gather information, really firming up the questions we need to ask and understand the best way to ask that and, and understand some costs that might go with that, so that when we do get to the point of the ARPA ask, we kind of know and can communicate clearly with you all what, what we're anticipating that project will look like. Um, we've spent a fair amount of time, Catherine and myself, working with Brigida Olson, our housing manager here, on developing an affordable housing policy that'll go with our urban renewal. District is, um, not quite ready for primetime, but we're getting very close and we will be planning to have an urban renewal meeting to discuss that. There's been some interest in affordable housing projects in that area and in Corvallis in general, so we're pretty excited to create a policy, get that in front of the agency and make sure we're, we're incenting the types of projects that, that the agency and our community members want to see down there. And finally, um, annexation of the airport and Airport Industrial Park, this is a, this is a biggie, this is a big lift. It's one of those, like, it's listed as one project, but man, it's, it's a lot. Um, Jerry and Heather are leading this and they have begun to work on kind of an outline and wrapping their arms around what all it's going to take and the timing of how we best integrate with you all, county, with the city. We've pretty well determined that we are, are most likely going to need a new zone down in that area. We don't have a zone in the city of Corvallis that we think would just be a good fit for the types of projects we're trying to drive for. Um, and to that end, we actually see a tangential tie-in with the work of the gap analysis. I think we want to get really clear on who are we aiming for? What sectors do we want to drive for? Um, what are the types of target industries and businesses that we want to see down there? And once we know the answer to that question, we can then use the development code to drive towards those very types of businesses. So the two of those projects will be related as an interim step. Um, I am excited to let you know that we have, we're working on kind of eliminating some of the internal barriers that exist for, um, businesses and we think have been maybe creating a protracted process. So we, uh, have just, um, begun to institute a, a new system whereby our office will be leading, uh, and coordinating all new and renewed leases at the Airport Industrial Park. Previously, that was in Public Works and we realized it didn't make a lot of sense because we were already at the table talking with customers and talking about enterprise zones and then Public Works was coming in and it was, um, I think just a too many cooks in the kitchen type of situation. So we're working to streamline that, uh, just even as an initial first step and we're pretty, um, we're pretty excited about that opportunity. So kind of doing what we can in the meantime as we tee up this broader, bigger lift about the zoning and then ultimately what will be the annexation of that land, um, into the city limits. So with that, the other, the other last items I just wanted to mention, we are convening the Economic Vitality Partnership, and you all may remember, this is that broader, I call it the 5,000-foot level group that Mike Corwin used to bring together. Um, our plan is to do these twice a year to just get our, our different folks around the table and just do a sharing out of information, what folks are working on, the issues that they're hearing, this opportunity for collaboration and coordination across the county. So that is, uh, has been set up for December 8th, um, in that, uh, late afternoon timeframe. I think, I believe it's 5:00 PM start. And that really, that's a bulk of what I wanted to share. Oh, I know Joe, when Joe Kirby and I were chatting too, Huey, that's kind of what we're hearing, what businesses are up against. And I, I think I would tell you right now is, of course, workforce continues to be an issue, hiring, um, getting, getting folks in the door and working. We had, still are seeing a handful of businesses around in, certainly in the restaurant world who have had to alter their schedules and, you know, close on days maybe where they used to be open because they just don't have enough workforce to spread through all those days. The other item, um, is childcare, and of course, it's related to workforce and, um, Heather on our team has been, uh, working on that in conjunction with our local COG, who's really taking the lead on holding a regional conversation about how we can, um, eliminate, eliminate barriers and create clearer paths for more childcare in our communities because it's, it's certainly a need and it ties directly into that issue of workforce. So, so that's my report. I know that was a lot. Happy to answer questions or discuss any of these items that you guys would like to.
I have one question following up on the childcare, um, topic. Um, with, I know that during the depths of COVID shutdown, if United Way was taking the lead role, talking about, um, childcare issues.
Right.
Um, so I'm a little curious to hear how the conversation is shifting, um, in that area. And I know we also have the early learning, um, based at LBCC.
Right.
So there are just so many players in that arena and this is also an area where we've gotten a lot of constituent interest, um, from our nonprofit organizations to provide, um, aftercare or, um, daytime childcare or, you know, in, in, in access to ARPA dollars. So I, I'm interested in having, um, in making sure that all of these groups have a good conversation, um, amongst themselves of, before they come and pitch things to us so that we know that we really are addressing the true gaps and, and that we're thinking about, uh, childcare needs in, in equitable way across the county. Um, so of course, I need to be saying this to the council of government folks, if they're the ones that are doing that, um, this facilitation, but it would be really helpful to us to, to know that a lot of those, um, questions have been answered. Um, otherwise, we're going to have a lot of hard questions to ask people and I'd, I'd be great if by the time we roll the money, um, the opportunity out for, uh, to request funds, that some of those hard questions have been answered.
No, and I, I couldn't agree more with what you're saying, Commissioner, and, um, it's funny, Mr. Kirby and I chatted about that same item as well, and, and I was in on some of the early phone calls that occurred with United Way and the others, and then I, I have not been and I don't know if they've continued to meet, so I have it on my list to reach out to the United Way and, and also chat with Helen Higgins, I know she was involved in that as well. I think part of this too is sort of left hand, knowing what the right hand's doing. I think part of this, too, is sort of left hand, knowing what the right hand's doing, because now the COG has stepped into that space. And so we wanted to make sure that the COG was connected with this sort of Corvallis and County Group that was in that space. And to your point, that folks know how it's being thought about, that there's cross pollination, and as, as we always talk about, you know, not duplicating efforts, but really coordinating.
Yeah, yeah. And the other question is just how the federal legislation might come in and provide funds, and what could, what do we need to do now to address immediate gaps, knowing that it's built back better, bill passes in Congress, it's going to be a while before any of that trickles out? So what we need to do now as a bridge for to address some of the workforce issues now, you know, what, what's most strategic?
Agreed, completely agreed. And I know the, the COG, we, we were on one phone call, and there's discussion about, you know, there's, there's a couple of ways to go about this, which are creating new folks that want to open childcare centers and then making that a possibility, but then also the potential for, and sort of asking the question of, well, are there centers that exist that could expand to that next level?
Yes.
What do they need? What are the barriers toward expansion? And so the COG's really working to wrap their arms around that and understand. And I do know, Commissioner, that they are tied in with LBCC and their early development, and then Marissa Schwartz, our director at the SBDC as well, as part of that conversation.
Excellent, I'm glad to hear that. Who's taking the lead on this, is the Council of Governments?
I believe Ann Whittington is really helping to lead that under, you know, along with Jenny Glass, her supervisor as well.
Since we're talking about childcare, I will just chime in as well, as somebody who struggles with this issue. You know, I'm, my job is flexible, and I'm fortunate enough to have the means to hire private childcare, and it is still a constant struggle. You know, we've heard lately that for every three spots that are needed, there's only one spot, so that's two people, two kids that don't have a place to go, or, you know, in Benton County. We've heard that a year of childcare for one child costs more than a term at OSU. So these are all very real issues.
Absolutely. No, and we're, you know, our, our team, we've got, you know, folks here with, with young kids, and we're, we're even facing that. And it's funny, too, one of the items, props to Heather Stevens, she and I were just chatting about this recently, too, is like, we think maybe another part of this equation is, you know, of course, creating more opportunities for slots for kids to plug into, but then also the education of businesses and employers. Like, how do you become an employer of choice? How do you help to support your workforce that has children? What does that look like? And so we've, we've wondered about the opportunities for education and dialogue with businesses, and that may be through our chambers, not necessarily through our office, but it's another topic, Commissioner Wise, that, that we've been chatting about as well.
Thank you. So we need to stay in touch as we move forward with our ARPA planning. I suspect that you've been talking to Rick Crager, Mary Ottley about this, but we will keep you in the loop as we move forward. The, I'm looking forward to seeing the affordable housing policy. My last question for you is really about the partners, the, our, some of our dollars go through you to other collaborators. Do you have any update on how, how they're doing and what they're doing? And do you attention to some of that work further out into the county?
No, thank you, and I apologize, I was remiss in not including that in my report, and I totally should have. I did have a really nice meeting with Marissa Schwartz and got up to speed with her. They are still in need, they had, they had sort of, I think mostly coincidental, maybe part COVID, part folks that were nearing retirement age and decided it was time, but they had quite a few openings for business advisors. She was very pleased to report, though, that she has brought on a Spanish-speaking business advisor, which quite frankly was one of the biggest needs that our team was seeing. And so that person is on, getting up to speed, doing outreach, which is fantastic. And she has brought on another one, I do know she's still, she's still looking, though, I think, for one or two positions to help. So, you know, folks are watching, and if you've had experience starting businesses and want to kind of get back to the community and have a, have a part-time gig with SBDC, give them, give them a call, because they're, they are actively looking to find somebody there. They are getting ready to open up their Small Business Management, the FBM, program, is just getting ready to open up. That one, this version, they're going to focus on leadership skills for folks and really kind of getting going on that. And yeah, so SBDC, they're rocking it. Also then with Oregon Rain, our other partner, our new venture catalyst, who we should bring on to introduce to you guys, he is out in the community and doing great things. His name is Nate Conroy, he's been going out and doing some meetups in our smaller rural communities, because again, that is their charge, is to work in the rural parts of the county. Nate and I have coffee once a month to check in, and I know they've, he's had, he's had sort of some small get-togethers, and I believe they're working on kind of their next large event that will pull folks in. But I continue to sort of monitor those contracts, and I think folks are, folks are doing great, and we've been really happy with, with the work that they're doing for you all.
Thank you. Commissioner Wise, any other questions? And welcome, Commissioner Malone.
Not really questions so much, just comments. I will admit that I'm happy to hear that the DCA is moving away from the EID. Being a counselor, the last time that they went through that, that process is just a hot mess. And I can imagine that Sarah Johnson is doing one big happy dance, not having to deal with that anymore.
Well, ironically enough, our team had volunteered to take the process on, so we're, she was doing a happiness when, when we took it on, and now we're really doing the happiness. But, and I should mention, too, Commissioner Wise, like, really exciting, Jennifer reached out to the Oregon Main Street folks, and so she's received a small grant to work with a consultant who's helped other cities, including Oregon City in Oregon, to transition from, okay, you were using this EID, how do you, how do you stand up then a new program? What are you going to do? How are you going to implement it? And so they're going to be working with that consultant, which we think is just fantastic.
That's, that's great. That's wonderful to hear. And then I just wanted to pass along my feedback on Courtney Greisel, Greisel, I'm apologizing that wrong. She was fantastic. I, I really appreciated that presentation, and I'm excited that we have some, you know, good help in seeing what that looks like.
Agreed. No, she was, it was very, very helpful, and yeah, we're, we're just really grateful for her partnership.
Definitely. And you know what? I owe you an email, so I'm sorry, I'll have to dig through my box and find it, and I'll get back to you.
Okay, sounds great.
Well, and I'd like you to know that I'm doing my part for economic development and rural governance, so.
I imagine you are.
Any other questions for Kate or any other comments on the report? I'm glad to hear there's interest in the Airport Industrial Park, that's exciting to hear.
It is, it is. It'll be, I think, the takeaways that we're seeing now and just the opportunity to streamline some of these processes, we're really hoping we can set up that area and really get it poised for an opportunity to build and grow, which is, is so much needed in our county.
And I apologize for being late. I know it's been in the works for a while for, for the county to, I don't know the right term, but give back our interest and authority over the airport. So it's just, any kind of development would just have to go to the city. Can you give me an update on where that's at?
Yeah, sure. And we, we discussed it briefly, that we are kind of wrapping our arms around what's going to be required. And right now, I think what we've determined, Commissioner, is that we, we don't have a zone in Corvallis that we can just apply to that area. So we want to get real clear on writing a new zone that will go down in that area and will meet the needs of the types of businesses that we want to foster, which then ties in with the GAP analysis and the work that we're going to be doing there. We like to take the lessons we learn of, you know, basically, what industry are we aiming for? Let's get real clear on what it is we want to see, and then as we write that new zoning and that new code, we can drive toward, hey, these are the types of businesses we want and we're encouraging, these are the types of businesses, you know, we don't need or are not looking for, and to get real clear on how that'll work through the zoning. So it's taking a little bit longer, but I think in the end we'll have a, a better result and can get at some of the unique needs that we have. And, you know, part of that conversation, maybe things like agritourism, right? We've, we've got some folks, or if you even think just north of that area, you know, Forest Spirits, Block 15, they're manufacturing, they're doing retail, they're doing tourism, it's all of those things, and how do we, how do we support businesses in that vein? So that's, that's kind of the brief version.
Okay. Well, if the chrome plating business wants to come back, I, I don't think we, we want That was quite the expensive cleanup. Looking, looking forward to hearing about that. I mean, it, it's been there for a long time, and it'd be nice to see more, more activity there. And, and like you say, it does fit in with development along Highway 99W and other businesses and industry, and so that would be a nice piece to have some activity.
Yep, could not agree more. And I do think that eliminating some of the barriers, quite frankly, one of which has been the, the layers of bureaucracy that applicants need to go through with a county process and a city process and a design review and all this stuff, cleaning that up, I think, is really going to get us quite a ways toward that. I will say, too, shout out to our friends in, in Public Works here at the city. They are going to be working in the coming months with the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, to, there's a, a system by which the FAA will grant sort of a pre-approval for industrial development, because again, FAA has a say in all the projects that go in down there, right? But basically, you can sort of say, hey, FAA, as long as it's sort of this type of vanilla within the confines of this type of development, you have pre-authorized and said, oh, yes, that is okay. And what that does is that gives us a blanket approval, so that in, if just, you know, Joe Manufacturing Company comes in and they want to build just a regular industrial building, they can go ahead and do that. It would be sort of outside the box or unusual item that would need to go through that FAA process. And that's one that we're very keen to clean up, because sort of like the Army Corps of Engineers, their timing is a bit nebulous. And as you all well know, I know I've said it many times, the issues for developers really, it's not just money, it's also time, and that unknown quantity of how long it's going to take can really be a barrier. So we're, we're excited to get that cleaned up.
Nebulous, I think that's a very diplomatic language.
I told you Kate was good, but thanks for that update, because that, that's exciting. Get some buzz going on what's going on at the airport.
Okay, any other questions for Kate? Thank you. I appreciate you jumping on early.
Absolutely, no, thank you for the time. It's always nice to see you all, we appreciate it.
Okay. Always look forward to it. Thanks. Okay, we are moving on to item 4.5, the discussion regarding location of district attorney's offices as well as to propose new courthouse. And as you know, if you have read through the press materials we got from Nick Kurth, this is a decision that is one that is time-sensitive. And I would like to remind folks that are listening, that unfortunately, program manager Nick Kurth is out today. He had a pretty strong reaction to Moderna Booster, and he is unwell. So we need to make this decision because it drives the cost of our new courthouse. Addition of the DA's offices to the new courthouse would add about $16 million, all of which would need to be funded by the county, can't come from state matching funds, which are designated strictly for the ports portion of the courthouse. So the decision is even more timely because of the fact that by pushing off the bond measure until May of 2023, we need to decide how we're going to fund the courthouse component, or we have to go back to the state and break the state bond in dollars into two tranches. And that's something that we'd rather avoid, if we can, because we already have a path now, we have those funding, that funding designated in terms of the state bond sale in May 2023. We'd rather stay on that same timeline if we can. DA Haroldson is with us this morning, he will address his perspectives on the issue. We also have a guest from the Courthouse Historic Resources Committee, and I'm sure I've gotten that slightly wrong, but Scott also put forth a memo that he will be referring to when we get to that point. But just a couple more elements of background first. Both the Technical Advisory Committee and the Community Advisory Committee of the Justice System Improvement Program recommended locating the district attorney's offices in the new courthouse, because it's much more operationally efficient to do so, and it's also going to, would be very expensive to upgrade the existing courthouse to the, in the way that it would be necessary to make it function for the purpose. So Historic Resources Commission, and Lynn McKee is also with us today. As the Director of the Natural Areas, Parks and Events Department, moving forward, if we don't choose to use the historic courthouse for an element of the justice system, then the management of the historic courthouse, once there are no courts in the building anymore, will be under Natural Areas, Parks and Events. And as board members, commissioners know, we did hear a feasibility report on potential reuse and alternative uses of the historic courthouse. So the decision whether to go forward with a next step case study and business plan for the historic courthouse as more of an arts and events center is also contingent on this decision as to whether to keep the district attorney in the courthouse. So and then the last element is that we have an opportunity to make some of this bond dependent, whether the DA stays in the, in the historic courthouse or not. So that is a strategy that might be helpful in the context of the bond measure, but I don't know that it will strongly affect our decision here today or not, because we haven't discussed this yet as a board. So we can talk today, the recommended order of decision-making is whether or not we prefer to have the DA's offices, future offices, in the new courthouse or in the historic courthouse, and we can make a decision at a later time about whether we want the outcome to be bond dependent. We'll be meeting with Rick Crager, our Chief Financial Officer, on December 7th with respect to funding strategies for the new courthouse. So with all of that preliminary information, I would like to invite the DA to speak, and then the representative from the Historic Resources Commission for the courthouse to speak to us, and then we can discuss it. So District Attorney Haroldson?
Thank you, Commissioner Ogierou, and also want to thank Commissioner Wise and Commissioner Malone for this opportunity. It's obviously one that, I believe you all know, is very important. Obviously, this is where we live when we do our work, and so it's a matter that is certainly unique in that context for us. Now that said, I would be remiss if I did not first take a moment to acknowledge the fact that we love the courthouse. Not only is it a historically meaningful place, but along with that, it provokes a emotional connection. emotional connection to our community and certainly to the work that we do here at the courthouse. When we think about some of those cases that have been the crossroads of our careers, it's hard not to be sentimental about them. But the issue before us really is one of safety. It's one of protecting human life, which is what we're dedicated to do in the work that we do in the justice system. It certainly is one of the greatest responsibilities that we have concerning the public. Now, when those two interests come up against each other, that's when we have a situation like the one that we face where we have, as noted in the Historic Resource Commission memo, the oldest courthouse in the state. Now, on one hand, that does give it some nostalgia. It gives it a certain sentimentality that carries with the historic significance of that. But by the same token, the older the building gets, the more of a liability it has become for us. And we know that of the four buildings that were constructed by, by the same architect, DeBose, that two of them were taken down and one of them is no longer freestanding. That's the Polk County one. So we're the only one of those four that were built in that era that continued to remain standing. As you know, I could probably spend a lot of time repeating details of the concerns that we have living in this building, we do our work, and what the potential threats are not fully tasked with the public that could come into the building. You know, it is, it does underscore that crossroad that we face in trying to determine, you know, what the best move is going forward. And to some degree, I would argue that it's important for us to make those distinctions as hard as they may be. As I was reading through the Historic Resource Commission memo, I found little that I disagreed with to the contrary. I think there's a, there are very good points throughout there. Unfortunately, they really don't address the safety issue. And some of the points you made there about having a sort of center square, totally agree with that. But having a town square is, it's a location issue, it's not a building safety issue. So again, you know, as we go through these factors that are certainly significant from a historical perspective, it's always for us coming back to whether or not we are placing life at risk in, we're having the building in its current structure. Also, it does invite kind of an interesting question with regards to preserving historic building. And I've not heard any debate on this issue, but when it becomes necessary to do a seismic retrofit that is to the degree of what would be needed to ensure that lives are not lost in the event of moderate seismic activity, then have we really preserved that building? Or have we gone beyond the scope of that preservation? I think that's an important question that needs to be faced because, you know, otherwise, if we assume that we can just, you know, fill the center of this building with concrete and it still looks great from the outside, you know, that's, that's, that's not, I guess I would argue that's not really a preservation of a historic building. But it's notwithstanding that. With regards to operations, and this is really an interesting topic because I know that there's been some public discussion around this, but it's an interesting discussion because frankly, people generally don't get the opportunity to fully appreciate why the district attorney's office is typically in the courthouse and, and why that function is needed, the location for the efficiency of the office. I did an informal survey, meaning that I emailed all the district attorneys in the state to ask, you know, how many of you are operating outside of the courthouse? Or, and by outside of the courthouse, I mean that there's no physical connection. If you're in a building that has a tunnel where you're, you're integrated that way, that counts as being in the courthouse and for purpose of my survey. So I was able to identify three counties, which means that 92% of the counties have their DA's offices located within the courthouse. And of the counties that do not have the courthouses, the DA's offices located within the courthouse, those are counties that have seen critical circumstances that forced that separation. And maybe one of the best examples of that is Marion County, where you have the asbestos issue that wound up closing down the courthouse. And that was, that's what precipitated the, the current status quo of where the, where the DA's offices are located today. But there are issues around that that are going to be important to consider in terms of the cost or to put another term, but what is the liability of that type of exposure? So I want to talk about that a little bit, but really kind of in a nutshell, to, to go back to this issue of locating the DA's office in the courthouse. I like to use sports analogy. Sometimes I would use a baseball in this case, but imagine if you have a baseball team that's going to play baseball, that's the job, that's the work that they do, and they practice on the field, they play on the field. And you take the dugout and the locker room and you put it across the street. Well, that's not going to work very well. Now, it might save a lot of money, but it's just not going to be efficient. Now, what happens if you move, move those so far away that you've got to drive to get to the stadium? Well, that's, that's yet another set of problems that you have there. So, you know, use that analogy to capture the essence of what we're doing in terms of our presence in court. You know, we have days where we have multiple attorneys that are present in court, where we're processing many, many, many cases. There's just so much activity that's taking place that by percentage and by number of people in the courtroom, that that is where we do our work. So, so that's an important one to, to take into account. So what, why is it? Why not talk a little bit about it's where we work? Number two, the safety and security issues, okay? So obviously, we're dealing with very sensitive information and it's important for us to have our systems integrated so that if we're going from our offices to courtroom, all of the data case management system, everything we've done to become paperless, it comes with us in that digital era. We're not leaving one system and then having to reconnect to another. And so that is part of the efficiency that's built into being within the same scope of an integrated system. Number two is a safety issue. This is something that I don't speak of often, but the reality is that for those of us who work in prosecution and other jobs, there are threats that are made. And there have certainly been threats that have made against lawyers, deputy DAs, prosecutors in vetting count, you know, and, and, you know, unfortunately, in my own experience, I've had a death threat that I took very seriously in my career as a prosecutor. I had an unfortunate experience of having people make threats to my family. And, you know, those are, those are things that if you live in that reality, you take very seriously, the degree to which you become exposed because every day you're running back and forth in the public eye. And there might be someone out there who sees that as an opportunity to target. Another example I would offer to you is a chief deputy that I had that worked in my office where law enforcement was able to take down a very active plan that even defined the type of weapon that was going to be, the type of gun that was going to be purchased in order to kill him. We've had deputy DA have windows smashed out of their vehicle next year, next to the courthouse and confronted as folks are trying to get to their cars. So these are real issues. Again, I don't typically discuss them because certainly don't want to encourage that type of behavior on people's parts, but it's a reality. And the idea that we would have folks exposed to that type of threat, especially today where we are seeing so, so much division politically and so much of a violent response towards folks and the people I have an axe to grind with, that I would, I would have great concerns with regards to what that exposure might mean to the employees of this office. But finally, you know, want to add to that with regards to, you know, what that means for us working in that integrated system, that if you can imagine, as I've often seen, where there's something happening in court and we're working as a team and suddenly we need to have coverage. An example that I would offer to you of that is, you know, I recall a case where we had a deputy DA who an issue came up in court suddenly where the defense attorney wanted to call the deputy DA as a witness. Well, if the deputy DA is going to be called as a witness, then there's got to be another person there to represent the state in that matter. And so I was able to rush down there and be in an instant to cover that. Okay? So that's, that's how, that's how quickly things happen. That's how quickly we have to respond to these particular matters. So with that, what I thought I would do is kind of define three scenarios that are possibilities. The first one is the ideal scenario I would describe as the DA's offices within the courthouse. The next scenario would be DA's offices connected to the courthouse. And I, I put in my notes tunnel model. Now, next to the jail, we have the basement door that goes where the inmates come into the, to the jail. If that, if the jail, now the current jail, if that was demolished and we then simply took that tunnel system and extended it out so that it reached across the street, then we could reach the courthouse across the street and have some degree of integration. I don't know that that's practical, it certainly wouldn't be my first choice, but it is a connected sort of, sort of model. The third option is the DA's offices sitter apart from the courthouse but within close proximity. So you would have to, have to leave the building, cross the street and then go to the courthouse. For all the reasons I've stated, I would strongly oppose that. Number four, DA's office centered driving distance from the courthouse. And I would say that is by far the least desirable and least tenable option. So one thing that I think is important to go back to is when we look at the authority, some, some might say, well, why are the county commissioners, why don't they do this or do that? And I think it's important for the public to understand that there are statutory mandates that our county commissioners are well aware of and who really recognize the, the requirement to abide by those. And one of those is that the county has to provide a court. They've got to provide space for the courts to operate. And you'll find under, ORS 1.185, really it sets up the language where it talks about the county shall provide suitable and sufficient offices and jury rooms for the court, judges and other officers and employees and juries and attendants. Okay? So that, that, that's, that's pretty unequivocal. Okay? Now, if we look at ORS 8.850, it says the county shall provide office space and facilities necessary to perform efficiently the duties of the DA's office. Now, what's interesting here is when you compare the two statutes, the one regarding courts has no qualifier to say it has to be enough to perform your duties efficiently. Okay? But the DA's office, one does. So what does that mean and how have we interpreted it? And how did we wind up in a place where we're having a discussion about whether or not the DA's office should be in the court and whether, and we're not having a discussion of whether or not the courts should be in the court? Okay? You know, and, you know, again, ideally, both should be there and it aligns certainly with the statutory mandate. But, you know, one, one kind of wild thought might be, what if we built a new courthouse that had the structure design so that you could add additional courtrooms? And you move the DA's office and to the courtrooms and open those up in the new courthouse? And then when we got additional funding, we could add more courthouses there, continue to use the, the, you know, the historic courthouse until that day can happen. That's certainly the state might have a greater interest in that too. It's just sort of, I guess, a little bit of, of, you know, thinking in left field. But it does, at the end of the day, it sort of underscores, underscores the point of what the mandates are, what the mandates mean, and how we should be considering this. You know, I would argue that the county commissioner serves the best position to determine based upon our input and, and whatever studies can be done, what our requirement is to be able to carry out our duties efficiently. And rather than have that be a matter for the public to weigh in on, particularly if the public isn't informed in terms of how DA's offices need to function and what their office needs are, it becomes an invitation for more of sort of a reactionary thing if the public is frustrated with the district attorney's office out of a reaction to something they've seen happen in another state. And that, that could have some, you know, negative implications or it could have positive implications. You know, the public had a really good impression of something that happened with the prosecutor's office in another state and suddenly because of that, that we should get, you know, Toshma Hall. And I would argue that neither approach addresses the efficiencies of the office. So that's a critical piece. So I'm almost done. I appreciate the time. I talked about, you know, sort of, sort of a, a left field concept, but at the end of the day, you know, the, we have to acknowledge the historical significance of this building. But we also have to be cautious not to seek validation from substandard practices because these choices will come at a cost. And cost means liability. And the liability that we're really confronting is one that is counted even like. I would invite any questions should the commissioners wish to ask.
Thank you, DA Haroldson. Are there any questions now or should we turn to Scott from the Historic Resources Commission and then circle back?
Yeah, I've got a question. You're out of the box, you went kind of quickly and I didn't understand the concept you were describing towards the end there. Is that, is that clear enough to remind you what?
Yes, sir. So Commissioner Malone, you know, in the course of my really examining the mandates related to courts in the district attorney's office, I was addressing the issue of, the question of why we were even considering having the district attorney's office outside of the courthouse. It would be really no difference than considering having the courts outside of the courthouse. And that, in that concept, if we were going to consider that, one model might be to keep the DA's office and half of the courtrooms in the new courthouse and build it in such a way that we can add additional courthouse, courthouses and, but continue to operate the remainder here in this building until that was done. That might be somewhat of a staggered approach.
To continue using the courtrooms in the historic courthouse.
Or a courtroom. But, you know, again, that still comes with, you know, the, the risk issues don't go away with regards to the stability of the building. You know, that, and so to some degree, my conceptual proposal is really, I think, a good tool to stimulate discussion around some of the prioritization and strategies that we use, you know, whether it could be done in that manner. It certainly were, worthy of a discussion, but as a practical matter, I think that still remains to be seen.
Okay. Well, thank you for filling out that picture for me.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Any other questions for DA Haroldson at this point? Okay. Well, we would be delighted to hear from Historic Resources Commission for the courthouse. Would you join us, Scott? I see you coming in now.
There I am. Okay. I'm, I'm not real familiar with this format, but thanks for inviting me. Yeah, like, like Mr. Haroldson said, it's, it's hard to imagine that, that many people in the county would, would argue with, with, you know, what is, with the, the points that are in that memo. I guess mostly what I would, and, and I certainly understand, I'm a little bit, my background, I've been a building contractor and woodworker in Benton County for more than 40 years and have done a certain amount of work in the courthouse. I was involved in constructing the security screen that's on the east side of the building there and have done a, a number of projects. I was, I was thinking about, when he was saying how things, how quickly things change, it seemed like when we were working there, the clerks would come out and, and pin a piece of eight and a half by 11 paper to a, to a court board with the schedule of procedure, I'm not sure what you call it, but, but the calendar. And then 10 minutes later, they'd come out and they'd take that one down and they'd pin up another one. They, they eventually went to the, the electronic monitors that we, we made some screens for. So it makes perfect sense to me that, I mean, that's where the DA needs to be, is they, they need to be in or very near the courthouse. need to be in or very near the courthouse. My, I guess, our main concern as a commission is that, you know, this is a fairly complex issue here, and I think our main fear is that the historic courthouse kind of gets, you know, kind of gets forgotten a little bit in the planning process. And, kind of a, something that was said to me years ago, I went to a barn preservation conference, and people always lament that old barns, you know, they just fall by the wayside. And one of the main presenters' ideas was that a building without a job is a building that doesn't get taken care of. And that is the fate that I would like to avoid with the courthouse. I understand the life safety issue. I know there have been, you know, seismic rip proposals, and it was expensive years ago, and it will be more expensive now, I'm sure. But I would just like to argue that, well, I don't want to argue, I would just like to say that I would like to see planning for future use of the historic courthouse as an integral part of this process, to avoid being a building without a job. It's very common for people to say, "Oh, let's make it a museum." But, you know, Corralston Benton County, we're full up on museums right now. So, I don't have very much else to add, except that I'm also on the courthouse preservation committee, and I think I'm pretty safe in saying, even though I haven't discussed with either of these bodies, that if there's any help that we can offer as commissions in, I don't know, gathering public input or somehow developing a plan, you know, that's something we would like to offer. Let's see, what else did I? I also was interested to hear Mr. Harrelson talking about designing for future growth. I think that's an excellent idea. There's a really interesting book, it's old and it's mostly pictures, but it's called How Buildings Learn, edited by a man named Stuart Brand, who you may know from the Horace catalog and Coevolution Quarterly. And it's mostly pictures, but it's a very interesting book and gives, it's really easy to go through, like I said, it's mostly pictures, but it does give an interesting perspective on buildings that are just fated to grow and have us design that in. I think that's pretty much all I have to say. I want to say thanks for all your hard work on this, it's a complex issue. I know, you know, I've lived in the county for a long time, and I remember what happened the last few jail measures that came up, and so it's a little bit like walking on eggshells. But I would like to offer our help in any way that you can see that's helping.
Thank you, Scott. That's much appreciated. I think we all are really interested in preserving the historic courthouse and doing it in a way that holds on to the history of the function as well as just the shell, the structure. And it's challenging to do that. But the work that Erica Cedar and her team have done from DLR has given us some good examples of how courthouses have been repurposed in other parts of the country, and in such a way that they have preserved the integrity of those spaces, those buildings. And so, from my perspective, I'd love to see us do that. And it's not going to be cheap. But depending on the decision we make today, then we will engage Erica and her team for the next phase, that business planning, if you will, to determine what it would take to change the function so that the courthouse does have a job, and make sure that we preserve it for future generations. So, yes, I think that both the courthouse preservation committee and the Historic Resources Commission for the county would both have a real role to play in that discussion and in moving that project forward. So, I, for one, would very much look forward to those ongoing conversations.
I just wonder, I'm not sure that the communications around this have, I'm not sure how the HRC would get copied in on pertinent communications through Inga, maybe, that she would pass on. Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how we might be able to take a little more active role, you know, maybe doing some legwork or doing things that, you know, that volunteers can do.
That would be great. You know, Inga, she is with us today. Thank you, Inga. And Lynn McKee from Natural Area's Parks and Events is another person who's been involved in these discussions as they would be the next owners of the building if we repurpose it moving in that direction. But Nick Kurt, who is the project manager overall for this program, is the current node or coordinator that is important to be in contact with. And perhaps he could work with Inga to make sure that you and your colleagues on those advisory committees are engaged.
Okay. Thank you. I would also like to say, I met Darren Nichols for the first time last week, and I would say, he's a fantastic hire, good job. He seems like a really lovely man.
Thank you. I'm glad you had an opportunity to meet with him.
Yeah, me, too.
We're excited to have him here. Commissioner Malone and Wise, questions for Scott?
I don't think I really have any questions. I appreciate your point of view and willing to work with us going forward. This is a kind of, it's an important building for the county, and it's also got some issues. I was going to ask DA Harrelson not too long ago, he was before the Board of Commissioners and gave the history of the studies of what to do, how to preserve the courthouse, and I think we have, oh, 30 years of studies. And just kicking the can down the road, as a phrase I've thought of in this situation, just that it's, yeah, we need to do something about it, and, well, let's do a study, and 10 years later, oh, we should do something about it, let's do a study. DA Harrelson was more eloquent about the history and, you know, not a whole lot of substantial upgrading has been done. So, I appreciate DLR's work and showing what other communities have done with their historic buildings, and I think that gives us some examples of where we can be headed. But it's, you know, I'm, I guess, in favor of not kicking the can down the road and trying to figure out where we're headed with this, and how to get there, and how to finance it. And so, I guess that's, those are my thoughts on the topic, and I really appreciate your work and perspective, Scott.
I wonder, is there a written synopsis of any of those past seismic studies and the information from DLR about other courthouses? Is that something we could use as a?
There's a draft report from DLR, and again, Nick Kurt is the person to go to for that. And in terms of past seismic studies, I believe at one point, they were on the Justice Systems Improvement Program website. I don't think that they're there now, but I should check. And, you know, as you probably recall, in order to do the work that needs to be done, usually it involves placing steel ivyings internally to the walls, and so it involves a reduction of space inside the courthouse structure, which is one of the reasons it's been such a conundrum for us, you know, to do that and have the current uses continue. And couldn't get any state funds, or they don't provide funds for retrofit or rehabilitation of courthouses to this extent, they only provide funds for new courthouses that meet best practice standards. So that's why we've been in this pinch of kicking the can down the road. But right now, we do have state bond funds pledged, and we are going to do our best to make use of them to move forward. But yes, we'll make sure that you get those reports.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to jump on and add in my thanks, Scott, for your dedication and for the dedication of the Historic Resources Commission and the courthouse preservation committee. Yeah, I know you guys are all volunteers, and that, obviously, to be a volunteer means that you really care about helping the law. So, thank you, and please pass along my thanks.
Thank you.
DA Harrelson.
Thank you, Commissioner Rosewood. I just wanted to invite Scott to connect with me. I would like to take some time offline to be able to show my timeline information, and it does include, I think there were at least 11 different engineering assessments made since 1985 until today. So, in any event, I would invite you to do so, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to send you my email address through the chat.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. It's, you've both provided very useful context and information. And now, it's our turn to talk about what we'd like to do moving forward. We do have a decision before us today in order to move forward with these other discussions about both the amount of money we need to raise for the new courthouse and to go ahead with the second phase of the DLR work. So, Commissioners Wise and Malone?
Sure, I'll go. I'll just start by saying that I really appreciate the testimony from the Historic Resources Commission. I know their job is to advocate for the historic structure and advise us as to what is best for the historic Benton County courthouse, which they've done a great job on that piece. You know, in my role, that is one very important piece to consider, but there are many other pieces to consider and balance as well. You know, pieces like best practice, operational efficiency, what aligns with JSIP, the recommendations of our technical advisory committee, community advisory committee, the DA. You know, certainly, the district attorney is an expert on his office and their needs, and I really appreciate that he is willing to advocate not only for his employees, but what's best for Benton County's justice system overall. I believe what is best for Benton County's justice system is housing the DA's office in a new courthouse building. I am committed to keeping the historic courthouse. I just don't know how we're going to pay for all this stuff.
That's what we have to keep working on, and I keep looking under, looking at every funding opportunity that comes by. And this is not typically an area where, unfortunately, where either the state or the federal government help in terms of preserving historic buildings, or not until they fall down. The only other, the county courthouse I found that had federal investment was, I can't remember where it was now, but was a county courthouse in California that was badly damaged in an earthquake. And then FEMA funds plus insurance funds were available to do that seismic retrofit that needed. So, I'm hoping we don't have that occur, because there's potential loss of life as well in this case, and we don't want the building to fall apart before we have a chance to shore her up. But, Scott, one of the things that would be learned is that if you have a public-private partnership and there's a private partner, whether it's a private entity or a nonprofit entity, they are eligible for kinds of grants for historic preservation that we, as a local government, are not. So, that's part of what, if we move forward with the DLR next phase assessment, we will really be looking at is what kind of a partner would be best to move forward with us in order to make sure that the courthouse has a job. Commissioner Malone?
Yes, and I appreciate both presentations this morning to help us get the details that we need. I think it, well, I'll take the easy one first. Moving forward with the DLR study, it makes sense, continue their efforts. I think we have to go forward with the new courthouse and the DA's office in the building or connected to the building going forward. I appreciate John's survey of, did you get all 36 counties, John? And so, it was 33 to 3?
That's correct. That's the responses I got.
Congratulations on getting everybody to respond. So that's, that's an excellent survey. And that just makes an easier decision, that this is how it's done. And I think we need to be with the 33 counties that are either in the building or connected.
If there is a further discussion, I would be happy to take a motion.
Are there two parts to this? Is the DLR, that's just, we've decided to move forward, and so the motion is that the new Benton County courthouse will have the DA's office either in the building or connected to the courthouse building?
That sounds like a fine motion, if that's how you want to frame it?
Well, that's as good as I can do this morning.
Okay. And I heard a second, Commissioner Wise. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with a aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Scott, I will make sure that we get all of those reports to you, and DA Harrelson can also share his information with you, so we'll make sure that you all are involved. And Inga, please reach out to Nick and make sure that we can support the continued involvement of our Historic Resources Commission and the courthouse preservation committee. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
And Scott, not only am I old, but I have an old farmhouse that was built in 1898 that we've put a lot of work and money into and it's, it still, it still has a function. So I, and oh, I watch some TV with London as the setting and see their old building. You can tell, oh, that's, that's really an old building and they're still, they're still functioning. So I think that's, that's a good model for us to, to use.
Okay, well, we are now have racked up item 4.5 on our agenda. Appreciate the discussion and we will move on to our information sharing segment of the agenda. I don't anticipate that it will be particularly long today, but I will begin with Commissioner Wise.
Thank you. Not a lot from me, just wanted to share that I had a good time at the Association of Oregon Counties Annual Conference. I learned a lot and met lots of new people and started forming, you know, some new relationships, which was good. Yeah, I committed to visiting a couple other commissioners in their counties, like Margaret McGruder, who lives in Claskinai in Columbia County. And I feel like that's going to be a good excuse for me to just continue, after visiting with her, continue on to the coast and spend a night or two at the coast, which I love to do. There was also some weird experiences and I just can't, it's so odd to me that we are in this place in politics where a mask can be so dividing. And I, you know, in my experience, the first couple of days there, I wore my mask the whole time and it was a point of, you know, I just, I got a lot of dirty looks. I got made fun of, had someone flat out say something rude to my face. And I just kept, you know, trying and being happy and killing with kindness. And by the fourth day, I think we all, you know, we're getting along and, you know, that kind of went by the wayside. But it's just, I think it's too bad that that has become a symbol of division and, you know, I don't know, it is what it is. I also had somebody make a very overt racist comment. And I just always thought that I would know what to say and know what to do and I would say, I would say something or, you know, like that's not okay. And I didn't understand what that, I didn't understand what the individual was saying. It took me a while to sink in what they actually said and I just stood there like an idiot and stared at them. And so, you know, I feel bad about that, but yeah, so lots of good experiences and then some weird experiences as well. Overall, I'm glad that I went.
Thank you. Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, I was trying to think, I wasn't there as long as you were Nancy and I, I don't think I got any of that, but, or maybe I was just oblivious, but I mean, there wasn't. So I got there late Tuesday afternoon and left after lunch on Thursday. But that's, that's disappointing that we're supposed to all be in this together and comrades and share best practices and complain about people that bother us and so I guess I had a shorter, but I think all positive. I enjoy the Wednesday session with the congressional folks upstairs and made quite a bit of use of, they were in the room and introduced myself. Sometimes there's a fair amount of turnover and in Merkley's office, Courtney's going to go out on maternity leave, I think after the first of the year, and she introduced me to B.J. Westland. Oh, that's an interesting last name and yes, his dad was Ben Westland, Central Oregon State Senator, maybe State Treasurer, anyway, long time active elected person. It was kind of fun to see his son kind of in the same business. But I thought the sessions were worthwhile. I quibble a little bit, some of the descriptions of what the sessions were, I don't think were as accurate as they could be and didn't have who was presenting. And I think I will, I did mention that to a couple of staffers and because you have to choose which one you're going to or if you're going to either one. And it'd be nice to have more information to make an informed choice. But I think that was our third physical meeting. There was one in Sun River in late June and in Salem in September. And then this, I think some of the partisan geographical differences get muted if we're in person and that you get, you get to know some of those folks and know what their interests are outside of what committees they're on or just to get to know people as, as human beings. And we haven't had a lot of that in the last almost two years now. So I, I hope there's no outbreak of COVID out of our meeting there. We're almost a week away. I haven't heard anything, so, but it did seem like some folks were kind of casual and not, not remembering that we're still in, COVID's still with us and that we have to behave ourselves. But, and I tried, I did try. But Nancy, I think you probably did, maybe you should get some award for wearing masks all day, every day. And I am sorry that especially some of our leaders in AOC were involved in Trace Talk.
My, my award was chaplits and broken out shit. But you know what? I voted for these rules. I, you know, I'm not going to be a hypocrite, so I'm going to, you know, I'm going to walk the walk.
Great. Well, you're a good example to all of us. Sometimes I forget. I think that's probably enough. It sounds like John will be explained. My inner telephone really got hit yesterday. I mean, it, like our landline wasn't working or maybe calls could come in, but we couldn't call out and so it was, and just not knowing what the situation was and anyway, so you folks got back on and finished the meeting with Vance, is that correct?
Our meeting wasn't disrupted at all. Yeah, so we just saw you disappear and figured that you had connectivity issues. And yeah, I bet that Vance is going to circle around with you a couple of things just to fill you in. So just him.
Okay, thank you. Because I had no idea what Yacht Hutts was out and I mean, well, for it. So I think probably some guy with a backhoe who's, who's real sorry today or his company is real sorry. Did you hear what, what, any details on the cause? It was somebody tore up a fiber optic cable. And we got, I think I, maybe I mentioned, we got internet back, oh, it was after seven o'clock last night.
Well, that's pretty, that's pretty speedy repair. I'm glad that you're up and running again. Yeah, it happened to any of us.
Well, this shows how delicate the system is. I've got a backhoe, I could have done that, but we don't have any lines out here.
You have to call before you dig, right? Just a reminder to always take your marks.
I, I can't imagine not doing that. I mean, it could be a gas line or, you know, you don't, if you don't ask, you have no, I mean, I bury things around here and it doesn't take very long to kind of forget exactly where it's buried. So anyway, I sympathize, I assume it was a backhoe operator. So that's, that's the story.
Well, thank you. So from my perspective, it was fantastic to be in three dimensions of the Association of Oregon Counties meeting. I agree with you wholeheartedly about the need to bridge the gap, the need to build relationships and continue those relationships in order to not let the partisan fervor get out of control. And I'm, it's really unfortunate Nancy that you experienced some of those challenges in respect to mask wearing and et cetera. Unfortunately, I didn't, but tried to be as vigilant as I could be about that. The highlights of the meeting for me, one was the lovely women commissioners event on Monday night. It was a nice dinner and an opportunity to talk with one another about the work that we do and how it affects us. And also attended housing panels. There were three different panels on housing and supported housing that I found to be quite helpful. And one was a focus on the Turnkey Project that was sponsored by the legislature last year and it highlighted our very own Turnkey Project, Corvallis Housing, Kristen Andrea Myrie. And it was wonderful to see her featured there at the conference among all of the rest of the commissioners in counties along the state. I also had the good fortune to tag on to a housing tour that was put on by Commissioner Farr. It was not a formal part of the conference, but his Clackamas County colleagues had reached out to ask if they could take a look at Opportunity Village, Emerald Village, permanent supportive housing that the county has just created on county-owned property. And so I was able to go along on that tour and get a feel for what they are doing down there, Eugene, Springfield and Lane County collaboratively with their nonprofit partners. They also have a very good working relationship with Oregon Department of Transportation. And that was interesting to see too. There's one camp, sanctioned camp on ODOT property where the city above it works. It picks up all the trash. Eugene's police does patrol, but it's not a managed camp, but it is sanctioned. So it was an interesting, it was interesting to see. They also reason all kinds of different structures. So they're housing a lot of Conestoga huts and they have some of the new structures that are rebuilt that are aluminum and plastic. They look really brilliantly white and clean, but evidently, and they have already wired so that they can be wired for AC or for heat. But unfortunately, they also get very, very hot evidently because of the nature of the construction, big plastic and aluminum. So they haven't figured out quite how they're going to use it yet. The other things that I've been participating in, I've been involved in the search for a new Oregon C-Grant Director at Bay Shore and State University, was invited to participate in that search committee just by virtue of my past involvement with the C-Grant program at Oregon State. I served on their advisory council for several years. And I also participated last Monday in the sequential intercept mapping workshop that was co-sponsored by the Corvallis Police Department and our county folks, particularly behavioral health and ARC of Benton County and ARC National folks. So this particular sequential intercept mapping process focused very, very extensively on first encounter with someone with the police and focused on folks with behavioral health issues and intellectual development disabilities and whether our processes deal are suitable for those people and how, what kinds of opportunities there are for diversion so that people don't become justice involved just because they have behavioral health, mental health or intellectual disabilities. And in a related point, well, first to go backwards on that. That workshop had a second date. I didn't attend the second day because it overlapped with AOC meeting, but there will be a workshop report. Part of the process was to come up with a bunch of priorities to address gaps in our system, to better address the needs of people with these challenges and to divert them from the system if possible. So that report should be coming out and we will all hear about it. So that, because I have a feeling that it will help determine some of the investments we make as we move forward and the rest of our justice systems work. We also, as you probably know from looking at your email, received an invitation from the, our advisory committee on mental health and addiction and developmental diversity to have one of us sit in and become the lead onto that committee. They'd like to get a little bit more closely tied in with what's going on at the mission level. So I would like to bring that up when we're at goal setting, when we go through and review our advisory committee roles once again. So I think that's it from my end. I'm glad that you had a chance to meet with our, with the congressional staff down in Eugene. I did not end up doing that. And so this is the first I've heard that Courtney Blathers is hitting out on maternity leave again. Thank you for the heads up.
There is no doubt about it.
I haven't seen her for a long time and I only seen her, I only see her in this mode. So, you know, you can't tell if anyone's pregnant unless they stand up on screen.
You know, I saw her a couple of months ago and she was not, she was not showing. So sometimes it happens quick.
Well, Zan, I'm glad you mentioned C-Grant a couple of times. The first time I heard it, I went to the letter C and then didn't quite hear the second word and I was going to break in, but, and I remembered your history and egg research is in the same building, so I'm a little bit aware of C-Grant. And the other fun one was you mentioned AC and I went to alternating current and said, well, of course it's alternating current. So that's where I am a little So that's where I am a little rummy, but a couple more busy days and for one, and then Thanksgiving, so, and the county and their municipalities gave us Friday off, so hope you all have a enjoyable Thanksgiving weekend.
And I have a couple of things I want to add too. So my, Pat, you brought up work clothes on Friday. My sister-in-law is the best mortgage lender in the world, by the way, but didn't, I didn't stop to think about this, if your closing date was on Friday, well, now the county records department is closed, so we might have, you know, thrown a wrench in some people's plans there. That's not really what I really wanted to say, so I just wanted to go back and clarify that I feel like all the people who, you know, we had misunderstandings or different understandings about masks, I think we're all friends now and I think we found some common ground, so I feel good about that. And then, so Council President Lidle dropped this off from one of her constituents that had called me yesterday and was trying to figure out how to get it to us and she didn't want it to be all hard copy in person, so who do I give this to?
That's a petition?
Petition against South Corvallis State for the Justice Complex and Correctional Facility.
Yeah, it should go to Nick Kurt, I think, for safekeeping and, yeah.
So how do I get it to, where should I leave it?
Well, you're in the office, are either, Tricia's on vacation, so is John Abey there today?
I don't know, I believe she'll.
Erica?
Sorry, yeah, I believe she'll be in later today. I can, if you want to put it on my desk, I can make sure she gets it.
Perfect, that'd be great.
Fantastic, Erica, thank you. And then they can put it in interdepartmental mail or, I don't know, maybe Nick will want, be scanned? I don't know what, what the best process is, so I will leave that to staff to figure it out.
And then, Zan, another question for you, we were talking about, you know, our advisory board liaisons and stuff. I know we talked about me moving to Hope. Just to clarify, does that start in January or would you like me to start it? Okay, okay, so Julie had just asked if we wanted to announce it and I hadn't really thought about it and then I thought, oh, well, I thought it wasn't going to be till January, so.
Yeah, I hope to reach out to you and be able to throw that up because I don't, we don't have any more meetings before I transition off. It's just one executive committee meeting. And in fact, if you want to attend that executive committee meeting, well, I'd like to attend that last one just to say goodbye to people and then we'll swap in January.
Great.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a bit of turnover there. On that front, the one last thing I would mention is that I have been talking to various people, including Lizzie from AOC and Andy Smith from AOC about a potential piece of legislation that will be introduced by Rep. about creating some state pilot funding for regional entities focused on housing and homelessness and we're looking at a city-county model and we already have that city-county model in place here and we are exploring whether or not we would be a good pilot and to consider potentially adding in along with which is talked about joining us or somehow making that the current hope for a little bit more county-wide in nature. So I've been talking to Julie Arena and Suzanne, often is aware of this as well, and we'll probably end up consulting with our county administrator and city manager as well, just to talk to them about it. That bill has been, well, the concept's been introduced, legislative concept, but it has a long ways to go before it becomes anything, so we have an opportunity to shape it too, but the way that they're talking about it now is provide a million dollars to, for a two-year pilot for, to be able to bring projects to fruition and given that project management has been such a challenging element of the work on housing and homelessness, this might be a real good opportunity to help with resources to make sure that we have those shovel-ready projects for shelter or permits for housing, for transitional So that's it from me.
Well, shovel-ready is the key, key phrase, going back to discussions with probably Dan Whalen from DePazio's office, but just, there's a lot going on. The infrastructure bill that's, has been passed, will be defined, refined, and that'll take months, but if, he was encouraging us to pay attention and as, how the money can be used becomes clearer that we, we pay attention. And that, the infrastructure bill has been passed and the next bill is still grining its way through the process, but that, that too is significant dollars more, more in the human resources side of things, but it, as always, it pays to pay attention and maybe exaggerate slightly that how ready we are to get some funding for much-needed projects.
Yeah, the bill's act better, our reconciliation bill has significant housing dollars in it, so I'm watching that pretty carefully. Okay, if there's no other information to be shared, then I will call this meeting adjourned at 11:30, saying, thank you and enjoy the holiday. Have a wonderful long weekend.
Yes, Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.